I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, April 10th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from three previous meetings, February 13th, February 27th, and March 13th, 2023. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantive corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda, but there is a correction under Presentations and Public Input. Presentation number two should be Examine Urbana, not Imagine Urbana.
Add another addition to requests, too. I move to add a discussion under New Business, just a quick discussion, checking in about housing discrimination, recap a little bit about what we talked about, and crisis pregnancy centers.
Could you repeat your first part?
Yes, I would like to move a discussion to add a discussion about checking in on housing discrimination and crisis pregnancy centers.
Yeah, you need a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. All right, we'll move on to Presentations and Public Input. We'll start with Presentations. First up, we have a proclamation for National Community Development Week. We have a number of members of the Community Development Services Department here, and so we'd like to... I guess we have representatives of the Community Development Services Department. This is a proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, whereas the city of Urbana's neighborhoods are the foundation for providing a high quality of life for its residents, and whereas the city of Urbana's Community Development Services Department has demonstrated a dedication to the revitalization of neighborhoods and production of affordable housing, and whereas the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Association of Counties and the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, and the Home Investment Partnerships, Home Program. And whereas, the CDBG Program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities like Urbana to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas, the Home Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, and affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. And whereas, over the past five years, our community has received $3,100,000 in CDBG funds and $7,600,000 in home funds. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023, as National Community Development Week in the City of Urbana, and encourage all residents to join and recognize the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnerships Program. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to a presentation on the Examine Urbana introduction, and it will be by Andrea Rudy and Lilly Wilcock, who are leading the effort on the Comprehensive Plan. And this is all part of the Comprehensive Planning effort.
Yes, we're pleased to present Examine Urbana to the City Council tonight, which provides background on topics important to the development of the next Comprehensive Plan for the city. Examine Urbana is meant to educate, empower, and encourage public involvement in the next phase of our Comp Plan engagement. But first, I'd like to recognize my colleague Lilly Wilcock, planner two in our Community Development Department. She has spent countless hours on this, and I'm going to embarrass her. She's spent countless hours meeting with staff and gathering input, researching data, and drafting the topic-specific chapters for Examine Urbana. Lilly will be covering the various chapters in more detail here in a minute, but I want to emphasize how Examine Urbana is an invaluable tool for the city that will not only be used for our next round of community engagement, for our new Comp Plan, but it'll also serve as a useful resource for the city, the City Council, and the public. Lilly has also used this incredible project as her capstone project for her master's degree in urban and regional planning, which she's completing this spring. Lilly will be receiving her master's degree from the University of Illinois of Urbana-Champaign next month. Yes! Big accomplishment, and she's been doing this in tandem with all her studies, so congrats to Lilly. We'd also, Lilly and I both would also like to thank the many staff members that were involved in this whole process of Examine Urbana, providing data, reviewing, critiquing, and yes, we do take constructive criticism well, and editing the many drafts that we've had. And special mention particularly to Kevin Garcia, Sheila Dodd, and Carol Mitten for their help in this process. So Lilly's going to walk us through Examine Urbana.
Yeah, and really, I'm going to walk through the beginnings of Examine Urbana, the first part and the last part, and then I'll talk a little bit about the structure, the scope of Examine Urbana, its purpose. So as you can see on the screen here, this is Examine Urbana. Oftentimes, with a Comprehensive Plan, you need to have some kind of background information for people to provide, you know, thorough and informed public input, and also make decisions that are really based off of the whole community and maybe take our knowledge, our personal knowledge of Urbana and expand that to, you know, the 40,000 people who live here and all the people outside of that who also interact with Urbana on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, when we're providing and thinking about the future of Urbana. So Examine Urbana is that. It's the background information for a Comprehensive Plan. It's informed by the people of Urbana, different stories that we wanted to highlight that touch on Comprehensive Plan issues, future vision issues, trends that we see in Urbana, and also really kind of highlight, put people first. So oftentimes, these reports can be a lot of federal-level data that can homogenize the actual picture of the people of Urbana and our issues that we see here and trends that we need to address in a Comprehensive Plan. We wanted to fix that and use as much local data as possible, even if it's much more challenging to use. And we really wanted to focus this on people and put trends and issues at the forefront of this instead of just the existing background. So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about this introduction chapter. It's where I hope everyone started, if you've looked at Examine Urbana, because this introduction chapter really kind of goes over what its purpose is, the purpose of Examine Urbana. We're here to provide an introduction to Comprehensive Plan-related topics. It doesn't cover everything the city does, by any means, and issues. It focuses on data and information about Urbana and the people of Urbana, and it also touches upon some of the misconceptions that we've heard and issues that the people need to know more about when they're talking about the Comprehensive Plan. We want to give people the power, the tools, to feel like they can put on their city planner hat and talk about, engage in city issues, be a little bit more transparent about what sometimes, oftentimes, staff will see every day. What Examine Urbana is not, this is always a really important part of us trying to gently lead people into the scope, it's not comprehensive. If there's a particular topic that you're really, you feel involved with, more than likely, you might read that chapter, like arts and culture, or housing, or energy environment, and say, boy, I just wish there was, we got way more into geothermal. And I would agree, but this is really for your neighbor. Then that's what we're trying to pull into. We're trying to pull this out for people who are not as aware of, you know, bike accessibility or food accessibility, and for them to be engaged in this as much as touch on a lot of the different things in that. And that's also just being respectful of everybody's time as well. This is already kind of a big ask on a big website. It's shorter than a PDF, but it might be still pretty bigger than a normal website. And so it's not a technical report on national population or national economic trends, though we do kind of touch on some of the effects. It is so important, if you are looking at Examine Urbana, to wait for the page to load before you start scrolling. It's against human nature, but it's really important. And if you ever feel like the website gets stuck or frozen, it's the first couple times that you load it, your web browser might have to be caching or saving that information as it loads, you gotta hit refresh. This is all kind of hit home a little bit more in a silent two-minute video that covers tips on how to use it. I'm not going to go over this video, but you know that it's there. And then there's three other sections in this introduction chapter. One kind of going over what a Comprehensive Plan is, how Urbana's plan works with state statute, but also horizontally across the city and with other communities. There's an overview of Urbana, which just covers some really high-level trends. And then there's just, you know, brief next slide, please click on the next chapter kind of highlight. This is actually, 100 years ago, we had really affordable electric train travel. This is Homer Lake, and you could go to downtown Urbana. And so then you see the next chapters, you can go all the way through. Andrea and I and numerous other staff will be coming in the following weeks to going over, in brief presentations, some of the highlights of those chapters. I'm going to skip to the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. It's kind of the bookend to, here's the Comprehensive Plan, here's Comprehensive Plan issues, background information for Examine Urbana, and then the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. Now, many of you have already seen the 2005 Assessment Document, where our staff did a lot of research and dug really deep into trying to find out what was done, what was done well, what didn't happen well, and what we can learn for the next Comprehensive Plan. But we did try to pull a lot of that information up and try to do it as visually as possible to about, from that Assessment Document into here. And you can see, there's a little bit about the planning process and its history in 2005. It's very brief. And then the breakdown, the structure of the 2005, how one, some person would pick it up, pick up the document and read it and make sense of it, some of the most important elements, like mobility map. And then there's also a section, once you get through that, and you can really see the lessons learned, the things that we'd like to improve upon for the next Comprehensive Plan, where we talk a little bit about what we'd like to do in order to make this better. And if I was at home, I would watch, let that video completely load, I just, for the record. You should do that. Crucial. So we'd like it to be, and I'll just recap this really quick briefly, we'd like the next Comprehensive Plan to be community-wide in its vision and focus, not get into a couple of neighborhoods, it just doesn't serve those goals and objectives well, and didn't serve it well in the last Comprehensive Plan. We would like it to be more holistic and touch upon many of the things that the Comprehensive Plan is going to, how it's going to be used in many numerous documents across the city. And we'd like to come back and evaluate it, set up metrics for it to track, and report on those metrics and what we're doing, and then strive to update it more regularly. That was what 2005 was like. I was in high school. You can tell, there's some little bits about that. The city's new Comprehensive Plan will really include equity and sustainability throughout the plan. That was something that kind of got shoehorned into a couple of different services and infrastructure goals and objectives in the 2005 Plan. We really think that that's the kind of stuff that the city did really well in the last 20 years, and we'd like to keep doing that and, but be more intentional about it. And that the Comprehensive Plan will be easy to read and accessible. So we tried, we strive to try to take the city jargon out of Examine Urbana as best as possible to include more people and invite more people into using this information. It doesn't matter who your background, educational level, everybody would have a struggle to use the language that sometimes we get in the habit of using every day, and try to just open up that audience more to people who maybe never engaged in city planning. And that is it. We'll be back next week.
And share with your friends, your neighbors, et cetera. We want as many people to read this as possible. A lot of work went into this, there's great information. Everybody's going to learn something from it, even if you are an expert on the environment and sustainability or arts and culture, everybody's going to learn something that they didn't know. And so Lilly's done a great job pulling this together, and, but the main thing is, we want people to read it before our next exercise that we do with the Comp Plan, which is going to be an exercise, an interactive exercise, that balances trade-offs between, if you make this decision, what happens here on the other side. So look forward to that in the summer, but in the meantime, yeah, please enjoy Examine Urbana, share it with your friends, and we will be doing, as Lilly said, weekly brief updates on each of the chapters through May 15th.
Thank you. We have time for a couple of questions, Grace.
Thanks so much for the presentation on this. I'm sorry if I missed it, but could you remind us how we find this? This website seems hard to find. Is it all publicly available? Is there still a login required and things?
No, there's no login required or anything. Examine Urbana, you just have to, it's examine.urbanaillinois.us. So it's the city's website, but instead of www dot, it's examine.urbanaillinois.us. It will be on the city's website soon, like I was.
Will there be a link from the homepage?
Yes, that's what I, that was the words.
Thanks for asking that, Grace. We neglected to say that. We did send a press release out on this last week, and we also sent an email to each of the council members with that link, too, if you ever can't remember it, but we'll get that distributed better.
And then you want us in the public to review this, and then you said in the summer we'll have another?
Another round of engagement, that's right.
Thank you.
And we'll be getting dates out for those.
Chandra.
So this is, so there are pieces, so Examine Urbana is a phase of Imagine Urbana? Like Imagine Urbana is the big thing, and Examine Urbana is like a phase of?
The Comprehensive Plan is a big thing, and there's all these supporting documents underneath it. So there is a supporting document, Assessment of the 2005 Plan, there's the 2021 Community Engagement, 2021, and then there's Examine Urbana, which is background information for people to make decisions. And so then the next phase would be, you know, a public input, but it's pretty technical. There's technical issues that we're going to throw at you, and you have to kind of make those decisions and trade-offs. And so it's good to have this kind of information and have reviewed it that way. Why is the city asking me about this? Or why can't we do it all? You know, is probably, I think, a common feeling or need, and then I think that you should have the tools or the information to answer some of those questions.
I would add, it's an integral part of the Comp Plan process, but it also is a wonderful standalone, I won't call it a snapshot, it's like a photo album of the city. So someone who's new to the community or wanting more information about the community, this is a lot of information in one place that gives a very nice picture of what the city is.
It really is a resource, you know, for staff, the council, the public, to be able to get information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name's James Miller.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
My name's James Miller. I'm actually residing in Thomasboro. I'm with Russ and Sharon Schaefer for the East University lot. Me and my family are the ones that own the Detail Shop. I'm the grandson. I just kind of wanted to give you guys a background on who I was and who my family is. I've been in business four years. I started from the ground up. I've gotten to the point from doing everything myself at home to taking over a building, bringing my wife in full-time, hiring a full-time person, we are growing. We don't plan on going anywhere but up. I want to keep growing and getting bigger and just help. We love helping the community, we enjoy helping everybody, just kind of the thing we like to do. So I just kind of want to announce who I was, and just kind of keep you guys' little heads, I mean, we're not, I don't plan on moving in, and if it all works out, leaving in two years and something else coming in. It's something that's been in the family, it's going to stay in the family, it's something that I would like to hand down to my children, and he's only five. So it's not something that I plan on going anywhere anytime soon. I mean, this, I went from working for my grandparents, working for my dad in the garbage industry. I've done a lot with the community in towing and helping do things like that, and I started my own business because I wanted to be my own boss. And I literally started from nothing, and I have grown to hiring, bringing my wife in, like I said, and another person, so I don't plan on going anywhere. Just kind of wanted to tell you guys that, it's kind of hard to put in a letter, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Yes, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Jonah Weiskopf. I just wanted to thank you guys. The, I believe you're approving a liquor license for an establishment I'm opening at 119 West Main Street later in a few months, and I'm super excited, and I just want to say thank you, and that I think Urbana, I'm just very excited to participate in Urbana's arts and music scene. I think it's thriving, and it makes it a special place, so thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Any comments from council members? Okay, there's no unfinished business. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Grace Wilken.
On behalf of Committee of the Whole, I would move for approval, Resolution Number 2023-04-007, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 7.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Grace?
I just had a question, if there was, there were some things to add, but that's what was written here, right? I was just making sure there wasn't any other written presentation from finance.
You had additional information on the memo entitled Revised Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Amendment Number 7.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On Committee of the Whole, I'd like to move for approval, Ordinance Number 2023-04-009, An Ordinance Amending the Urbana Zoning Map, R3/B1 to B2 at 714 East University Avenue, Plan Case Number 2470-M-23.
Sarah, second.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jaya. Discussion? Grace?
I was wondering if there was any follow-up from last week, and just making sure that we had all of the steps in order, and I've been thinking about it as well, if you can help me understand this better, because this is coming to council just because of the change in zoning, right? Like if this had already been?
Yes, that's correct.
B2, and the use changed, the plan, is it the commissioner or?
No, the zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator, thank you.
Yes, that's me.
Thank you. So you can, like, if this had already been B2, you could have changed the use to allow the auto detailing in B2, if it had already been zoned that, is that right?
Well, I would, so I would make a formal zoning interpretation on how we would treat that use, since it's not in the table of uses.
And that wouldn't come to council, that's just up to the commissioner's discretion.
Well, that, sorry, to clarify, that's up to the zoning administrator.
Administrator, yes.
Which is me. But we do have a process in place for appeals if somebody did not agree with my decision.
Thank you. And then, was there any more to the general process, or that kind of sums up the thing here?
I think that sums it up.
Okay. And like I said, last week, I think that this absolutely makes sense, I have no problem with this use, this rezoning. I just, what I'm getting at, I don't know if I expressed that well last week, was just the idea of a concern where, to me, this seems like it fits in the vehicle one instead of the personal services, and I understand that you are the one with the authority to determine that, and I was just bringing up the general concern of kind of like, where does that line stop? Like, what if we say we can allow a liquor store or a strip club slash liquor store that's not exactly in the uses there in like residential business, or it's kind of, where is that line of discretion? I guess that's a bigger part of the way the system's kind of set up.
I'm sorry, was there a question there?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think I'm just expressing to council members my concern, and yeah, I guess rhetorical question of where is that line? If you have an answer, feel free to respond, but not required.
I mean, typically, we don't have to get to a line because most of those uses are already in the table of uses, so it's just, if there's a use that, you know, that wasn't around when we wrote the table, then it's up to the zoning administrator's interpretation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Let me expand a little bit. You had mentioned, the zoning administrator makes the interpretation in terms of the best fit. If the applicant disagrees with that zoning determination, they can apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
The good, yes.
The question is, if the community disagrees with the zoning designation, is there a process to then ask for a reevaluation?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney on that one.
Thank you, councilmember. Off the top of my head, I think the answer there is no. I'd have to go back and look through that process to see that, but I think typically, when you talk about these kinds of processes, it's the direct parties involved with it. Realistically, would have the ability to either challenge it, accept it, you know, or whatever that next step may be. It's not necessarily built around a community stepping up and saying, hey, we don't like that, but certainly we can look at it and provide a more definitive answer, I think, out of the zoning code itself, whether that's a possibility.
It's my understanding that there is no way for the community to actually appeal the decision. I'm just thinking of previous cases in which there wasn't an existing category for something, and it's been, you know, this is, we're going to use this category because it's the closest fit, so to speak.
I mean, we could always do a text amendment to add a specific use to the table of uses if we wanted to have, you know, more certainty.
Okay, thank you. Chandra.
So will this be auto detailing be added to this table of uses under this B?
No, it would not be. We'd have to do a separate case, a text amendment that would go through a plan commission, and then to City Council.
So it's just, this is a special case because it was a split zoning thing, correct? Because other auto detailing places are zoned regular business or whatever, right?
There are. I'm pretty sure all other auto details are in zone B3, possibly. I think we have some in B4, but those are non-conforming.
Grace?
Grace, I had one more. Is there a process for making something that legally non-compliant or non-conforming? Are they usually grandfathered in, or is there a way to like, in this case, could we say like, okay, you're in B2 legally non-conforming, rather than saying this is categorized as a personal service?
I'm not sure I totally follow the question. Typically, so if something's legally non-conforming, it's something that was allowed, and then the zoning ordinance was changed so that it is no longer allowed in that zone, so it takes on the legally non-conforming status. We can't, we couldn't make something legally non-conforming, like right, right now when they're establishing it.
Thank you. I think that answers the questions, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Or Mary Alice? Discussion? Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the applicants who are in the back of the room, and all this discussion that we're having right now is not about your particular parcel, it is more about the process. So that, I just wanted to clarify that for those of you who are attending. I'm the one who kind of raised a little bit of concern about parking and so forth, and I understand that the property owners want to stay there long-term and so forth. I don't really have a problem with this. I think it's an interesting case in terms of designating different uses that don't exist. I think it's an interesting case in terms of designating different uses that don't exist, which is a longer conversation, a broader conversation, but doesn't particularly apply to this case. I'll be voting for this, thank you.
Grace?
Thank you, Mary Alice, for reiterating that. And I'll just also echo, I, I agree from my own perspective as well. This is just the process stuff. Support the, the change here and I understand the idea and appreciate this company doing business in Urbana and hopefully the zoning change and combining your lots makes things a little bit easier.
Any other discussion? Jaya?
Yeah, I also just kind of wanted to take a minute and say, I think it's worth noting, at least for myself, I didn't have questions about the particular decision. I think, you know, when we look at that and look at the evolution of our zoning over time, we have vehicular sales and services under one designation. There's nothing to say that they couldn't belong under another designation as well. And I feel like that piece was getting mixed, missed, right? Of like, yes, we have a category that, you know, this could fall under, under B3, but there's nothing to say it couldn't fall under B2, we just don't have that category. So I, I think, you know, as we're raising these questions and having these conversations, it can suggest that staff made the wrong decision where I think there's a very logical trail that can be followed to see how we ended up with this particular decision. I think that's worth noting as well, that staff put a lot of time. And while there are questions to kind of make sure we understand why something ended up where it did, that it's also worth noting that staff has already done that process and made the decision based off of their expertise as well. So wanted to thank the staff for their work on this as well.
Ready for a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Also on behalf of committee of the whole, I'd like to move for approval, ordinance number 2023-04-011, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three, Dash Forty-Three, Maintaining the Number of Class A Liquor Licenses for Synesthesia LLC, Doing Business As Gallery 119 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? James?
Yeah, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to be voting on things where businesses are expanding, are coming back in, in our city and appreciate the, the person who's opening this business to, to bring some life back to Main Street.
And I can say we all had to look up what the word synesthesia meant. Well, speaking for myself and my staff. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Lastly, on behalf of committee of the whole, I present ordinance number 2023-04-010, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three Forty-Three, Increase in the Number of Class H Liquor Licenses for VD3 LLC 1001 West Killarney Street, Urbana, Illinois, for approval.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Completes the committee of the whole business. Reports of special committees, there aren't any. Reports of officers. I have a couple of announcements. One, we, we received very good news at the end of last week. The city of Urbana has been awarded two ITEP grants. These are the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grants through the Rebuild Illinois Program. They totaled two and a half million dollars. It's for two projects. The first is for construction of the shared use path parallel to Florida Avenue between Lincoln Avenue and Race Street. This is part of the bigger Florida Avenue construction project. So this is, this is huge. We've been working on this for many, many years. And it was a wonderful collaboration between the Regional Planning Commission, the MTD and the city for writing the grant and then support from our community partners, particularly the University of Illinois. We had strong support from President Colleen, from Chancellor Jones, from Facilities and Services to construct this path. And it's going to be a major enhancement of connectivity between campus, Orchard Downs, south to, to South Urbana and then on east. So we look forward to that construction, I believe, starting next year. And then the second grant is for another shared use path, again, supporting bike and pedestrian connectivity, and that's in east Urbana. And that is along Baker's Lane and hooking into west, eventually into Washington Street and connecting the neighborhoods in east Urbana to Washington Street, the Health and Wellness Center and the bike path there. So this was just wonderful news and we're grateful to the governor and the community partners who helped support this project. The second announcement is next week Carol Mitten and I will be in Washington DC. We're traveling there with Champaign County First. This is our annual lobbying trip on behalf of Champaign County First, which is a coalition of cities, villages, community partners like the U of I, Visit Champaign County, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation. We established a list of infrastructure projects that benefit the county and then visit our elected officials in Washington DC. Past years have involved road projects, railroad overpasses, the mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer, sewer, sewer project for a storm, or a treatment project for a small village in Champaign County. And for the city of Urbana, the, the project we will be focusing on this year is seeking support for eleven million dollars in, in the grant that we've applied for to reconstruct Florida Avenue. So this timing of the shared use path couldn't come at a better time. The other thing I want to mention, you say, you might wonder, well, what, how effective are you when you're doing this sort of thing? One of the projects that all of us in the coalition have supported has been the mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer. That, you know, is the sole source of drinking water for well over a half million people in central Illinois. And it's becoming increasingly important for us to protect both the quality of the water in the aquifer and the quantity. And in order to do that, you have to know what it looks like underground. And we have a very rough map of it right now. Well, there's new technology being used in Europe, actually, for a number of years, but the geological survey here is now using it. It's HTM, it's helicopter borne technology that really creates like an MRI of the aquifer. It's the best way to explain it, I guess. And the entire cost of that is close to maybe fifteen to twenty million dollars, latest estimates. So you do a little bit at a time. Well, after three or four years of repeatedly going to Washington, asking for federal support for this, because something like this, we just don't have the funds locally. We, there was a congressional earmark last year, Senators Durbin and Duckworth were very instrumental in that. And the first million dollars was allocated and that work is being done now. And then the Champaign County allocated another five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds for mapping the aquifer. So there's one and a half million dollars, which will pretty much cover most of Champaign County aquifer, there are portion of the aquifer, but it extends all the way over to the Illinois River, close to St. Louis, so there's a lot left to cover. So anyway, we, this kind of repeated, organized, persistent visiting of our elected officials in Washington is paying off and we're hoping that we continue to see results from that. So we'll be there early next week and we'll not be at the meeting next week. Okay, that's, anyone else have any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to new business. There is none. And then there's discussion item, housing discrimination and the Crisis Pregnancy Center.
Uh, thank you for supporting this edition tonight. It was a little impromptu. I was just hoping that we could have just a little bit of discussion, just checking in about two items that I feel like we've had some previous discussion on. I think some staff and executive have been looking into some issues and if we could just kind of touch base on a next plan from here. Those two things being the CPC's Crisis Pregnancy Centers and the housing discrimination, and particularly the housing discrimination in light of some of our conversations we've been having in town board for anyone else who's interested and hasn't been watching those meetings. There's been some other good discussion. So I don't know if we could just kind of reiterate and maybe get a check-in from executive and staff and share other council member thoughts.
Sure. I can start with the housing. As I mentioned in the town board meeting, since the March twentieth presentation by city staff on the new Source of Income Protection Law, staff have continued to seek and receive information on this topic. They attended two of the three workshops held by the Hope Fair Housing Center. City Attorney Dave Wesner and Human Rights and Equity Officer Carla Boyd attended both of those. These workshops were put on by the Fair Housing Center, the Illinois Coalition for Fair Housing, the Regional Planning Commission, Cunningham Township, the Champaign County Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless and the Housing Authority of Champaign County. And I will say, and I know Braden Belcher and Sheila Dodd have been attending the meetings over the past months as well. So staff has been represented at all of those meetings. Staff also reached out to a number of neighboring communities, including the city of Champaign, and we received additional guidance from the Illinois Municipal League, Legal Department. And all of those things, plus the input that we've received, particularly from the tenant union township and others, have helped clarify and answered a lot of the questions that we had going into this. I, I want to, I think the three messages we want the community to know is number one, that we have a human rights ordinance in place. We've had it since nineteen seventy-nine. We are enforcing it. We will continue to enforce it, including Source of Income Protection is one of those areas of enforcement. And again, it's very important when people, people can bring a verbal complaint, they can bring a written complaint, but it's hard to prove if you're just operating on a verbal complaint. Becomes, they, you know, the two parties, words against the other. So it's always best to have as much written documentation that a complainant can bring to the case, but we will work with them, no matter what. And it's clear that as our own ordinance plus the January first, the law that went into effect January first, is that a landlord cannot refuse to lease an available housing unit simply because the rent will be paid with a housing voucher such as section eight or a tenant-based rental assistance. That's, that is the, the law in a nutshell. If a prospective tenant meets all the rental criteria, intends to pay with the voucher, landlord cannot refuse to rent. And at that point, the landlord is required to enroll in the voucher program in order to accept the funds and there's a process then for that. It doesn't mean that the landlord gives up all rights to apply rental criteria such as checking references or asking for a credit check or verifying information on an application. That absolutely still can be done. But people, landlords have to treat all applicants the same throughout the process. And that's the key to this new law and that's been the key to our housing, or to our own ordinance. And I just want to assure everyone that we will, the city of Urbana will continue to work with the community to ensure that all people have equal access to clean, safe and decent housing. Yeah?
I'm curious as to what IML had to say about it and if any other communities in, I guess the state, but if they referred to any other communities having, like it's a vague interpretation to them of, of the new law.
The words that IML sent to us are basically the words I just said to you. I, I, it was very, they were very, they were very straightforward. I, I appreciated their, their assistance in this. Yeah, and Dave may have some further information.
No, I was just gonna add, because as, as the mayor alluded to, we contacted other communities and, and I think for a couple of things, I was asked to contact Champaign Legal Department on, on these and, and what I got back from Champaign was they're dealing with it exactly the way Urbana is, which is, it's not necessarily that it's vague, but I think they're treating it the same as we would, which is if there's a complaint, we will process it just like any other complaint to discrimination and, you know, require their landlord or a property owner to provide whatever, you know, response or defenses they have to it and just kind of follow that process along. They also indicated that they're hopeful that the Attorney General's Office will put out some information about how they perceive this new statute. And, and as you recall, the, what the state did was literally just insert the word Source of Income, and I think they had a definition for Source of Income into the state law, so they didn't elaborate on that. And so I think even for Champaign, they're hoping that if the AG's office puts out some helpful information, I guess, to, to help all of us, including the state, I guess, if they weren't sure exactly how they would process them once they put this into place. But that's how, you know, Champaign's waiting for it as well. They will take on cases also. The perspective they've got, just like we have, is depending on the circumstances, some may end up getting referred to the state, I think, in terms of the overall involvement and whether or not the, the individually best served by actually having that heard by the state versus locally. So again, I just want to indicate Champaign's dealing with these the same as the city of Urbana.
Carol, did you have more information on the incentive programs that are available? Do you remember what some of those were?
There's, excuse me, there's a statewide program that will allow, I believe, up to nineteen percent reduction in the assessed value of a property that includes that, where there are vouchers that are accepted or being applied. That depends on how much of the property is devoted to housing that's being funded by a voucher. At the local level, there are a number of incentives that the Housing Authority has recently created. One is just an outright incentive to basically kind of get people involved in the program. There's another incentive, they all have names and I'm sorry, I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but one is they will pay up to two months' rent if you have a, a housing, if you have a tenant that's, that's paying with a voucher and that tenant leaves and they would like you to continue in the program and hold that open for another voucher holder, they'll pay up to two months' rent for you to, to hold that unit. And there's also a pool, I'll call it landlord risk mitigation pool, Sheila's nodding at me, I'm getting that one right, that if your property is damaged by a tenant who is a voucher holder, they will pay up to twenty-five hundred dollars in, to repair any damages that are caused by that tenant. And I think that's, I don't know if that's a year or, I don't know how, how, if it's twenty-five hundred dollars over the life of that unit or, or what, but I, I do, since I, since I have the mic for, for just a second, I, I do want to say, when we talked to Lily Walton and the folks at, at the Housing Authority, what I took away from that conversation was that they're taking a really positive approach about it as opposed to, which, which I, which I think is, is the best approach for everyone to take, which is, it's, it's not creating animosity and adversarial relationships between tenants and landlords is not going to lead to good results in the long run. And that's why they created these incentive programs, because they want to be partners with the landlords. And I think that's the approach that we want to take too. And, and I think what's missing right now is if, if we had guidance from the state, then I think landlords, we could be educating landlords with sort of the official statewide position on what this new law really means. I think that's a missing piece. No one has undertaken a kind of global effort to educate landlords at this point.
Go ahead.
I know that they're the Champaign County Housing Authority incentives, but is the city doing anything to sort of help push those incentives out to the landlords so they know that they exist?
We, we haven't done that yet, but I think that's a great idea. I mean, the first that we really learned about them in a, in a comprehensive way was when Carla made her presentation just a couple of weeks ago. But yeah, that's, I mean, that, that's really good. And, you know, I, I was thinking about it, if we had, if we had known more when we were doing ARPA, that could have been, that could have been incentives that, that, an incentive program that we created too. That doesn't mean that we can't do that in the future and then we give some thought to that.
Chris?
So without a specific applicant, will the city of Urbana be enforcing or a more merciful version, educate a landlord who's advertising- a landlord who's advertising, they don't take vouchers or Section 8, and they're advertising it in their, you know, advertisement for the unit? So will we still be enforcing, so to speak? What I mean by enforcing, stopping them from advertising like that?
Yeah, as far as I understand, I don't think we've ever not said that we would take those steps on that. And I think, and again, I don't want to necessarily speak for Carla, because she's not here, and she could elaborate on this herself, but in my peripheral kind of involvement from a ways back, Carla had indicated that one of her things that she really wanted to concentrate on was educating landlords, I think, because they just, you know, I guess I may be naive in thinking that they're not purposeful in doing that. But at the same time, I think it's more driven to the idea of compliance. Things like this in terms of, you know, potential violations of city ordinances are more driven, I think, that compliance is priority, because then you solve the problem upfront without having to wrangle with them on a regular basis long term, so.
I think that's what I heard from Esther Pat repeatedly, was that once you inform the landlord what's going, what the law and what's going on, they're usually compliant, so.
I think the new state, I think the state law actually prohibits that. Prohibits advertising they don't take vouchers. Grace?
Thank you. Again, appreciate the discussion. And overall, I would still like to have a, another discussion with more preparation, as you said, with Carla here, with our Human Rights and Equity Officer. Because what I see as a few things that still need to be addressed, resolved, clarified, would be the issue of the Housing Authority inspection. That was kind of the original thing here, and I think we need to clearly figure out, if we can't require it, okay, then can we impose a fee if they choose not to, just because that's the only issue? I think we need to figure out more details about the Housing Authority inspection piece. Also, the issue of being denied an application and looking into it. The Human Rights Ordinance says specifically that there doesn't need to be an individual claim for the commission to look into it and investigate things. I appreciate, you know, the idea of education, but I think that there needs to be more teeth to it. We need to have actual fines. We need to have some actual meaning to this. We've had that list of places that have been known to advertise openly, that they don't accept vouchers. That list was submitted within the city for quite a while. I don't know if there's been a, you know, action on that, or if there's been an impact on addressing those things. And then also, again, the issue of investigating or testing some of these applicants. And if we get some data from some other partners, that would be really helpful. So I think this is a really important issue, and again, I really appreciate the discussion on it and looking into it. But I feel like we have a lot more things that we need to resolve clearly as far as how or if we're going to enforce this that I would still love to see at a later discussion.
Mary Alice?
So one of the things that I did after Carla had presented, and also after Danielle and Esther came in, is I called Carla just to ask her some questions, some follow-up questions. And one of the things that we talked at length about was the report that Danielle was referencing from 2019, I believe, was the date. And when she first came on to this job, please confirm this with Carla, because this is my understanding of the conversation. When she went to the Human Relations Board, they said they really wanted her to investigate if that was still the case. Right? So she came on in 2021, and the report was, I think, 2019. And after she investigated, she says, this is no longer the practice. So the Human Relations Commission did really emphasize that report. I know that she worked on it for quite some time and, and did some follow-up with that. So I just wanted to share that with council, especially since Grace, you just brought that up. But I do recommend talking directly to Carla, just calling her up and asking her some clarifying questions. I did ask Carla if she would be willing to write a memo, or an update, or something, kind of giving a status of, of some of the questions that have come up, and, and the Human Relations Officer, and how she approaches different things.
And I, I need a little more information on the inspection. What question in particular did you have about that?
Yeah, my understanding was that kind of what sparked this whole discussion in the first place was the issue of saying a landlord can't discriminate just because you have a Section 8 voucher, but we can't force them to do the Housing Authority inspection and certification to accept vouchers. Is that not the right understanding?
That's what the change in our understanding was when we got the advice from IML, is that if you actually get to the point where you have had a person apply, and you've taken them through the process that you put every prospective tenant through, and you get to the endpoint where it's okay, now, you know, let's sign, or whatever, and they say, I have a voucher, that the landlord is actually not under the law, correct me if I'm wrong, and this is what IML had indicated, that at that point, they must, as the mayor said, enroll in the program. And that enrollment includes the inspection. It includes all the things that are required. It includes either removing certain provisions from the lease, or understanding that those are unenforceable. There was one other thing, I can't remember what the third thing was. But basically, that, that's what IML advised us, was that that is no longer, we, we were under the impression that you couldn't force that last step. You couldn't force a landlord into that third-party agreement. And IML clarified that that is, at least as far, without other guidance from the state, that is part of the process. They must enroll in the program.
Yes, specifically, they said to accept Section 8 funds, the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires landlords to enter into the Housing Assistant Payment Contract, that HEP contract. This contract allows the funds to be transferred to the Housing Authority of Champaign County, which in turn transfers it to the landlord. So you have to enter that agreement at that point, after your tenant, your prospective tenant has passed all the criteria, or satisfied the criteria to your satisfaction. Chris?
So what I remember Lily Walton saying, and at, at the March 20th, is that she said that the, just, you know, to let landlords know that the inspection standards for a housing voucher are almost less than standard city inspections. I mean, does everybody remember that? Okay, so just to kind of let the landlords know, hey, you know, it's not a big, it's not a rougher deal if that happens, if you're compelled to do that, so.
So, so to me, it feels like that takes that, that sort of voluntary word out of it. Because if, if a person seeking to rent an apartment shows up with a voucher, you have to follow through with the inspection, or whatever, whatever else it takes to accept that voucher.
I think, just to put a, kind of a fine point on it, because we're getting into the, into the weeds, I think that the issue is it's voluntary until...
Someone requests.
Until you get to that endpoint where you've, where you've taken your applicant, and you've vetted them through your normal process. And then when you get to the end of that process, and it's just about how are you going to pay, that's when it's not voluntary anymore. But our understanding also is that no one is saying this is a mandatory program, unless those circumstances apply. So that's, that's, that's part of the, I don't want to say nuance, but that's part of the detail of this.
Keep your form of payment in your pocket, too.
As long as you, and the key is, as long as people treat all applicants the same through the process. Grace?
Thanks. Just had one more thought to Chris's excellent point about this Housing Authority inspection not being a big deal beyond our typical inspections. And so there was also the idea just kicking around, you know, systemically, is there anything that we could combine with the city inspector inspecting rental properties? And like, by the way, you can also enroll for it. Like, can we increase just the general number? Like, in an ideal world, if every available rental property was also enrolled to accept vouchers, like, would that make that process so much easier in Urbana? And so I don't, I don't know all the details, but I just don't know if, you know, like, our rental inspector could be trained by HUD standards to also inspect and kind of pre-certify, or say, if someone comes with you for a voucher, you've got this kind of, you know, pre-approval thing, that it could be even an easier process. So I was just wondering if there's even some ideas we could kick around, like, systemically, to make some changes.
Okay, thank you.
Diane?
Mary Alice?
So, just to, what I heard last time when Lily was here was that you have to get recertified every single time there's a new tenant. So you can't get, you can't say, okay, I want to offer this up. You have to wait for somebody to come with a housing voucher. The apartment has to be vacant for them to be able to go through and do the inspection, and then they get approved. But say it's the same apartment, and say James comes a year later, they have to go through the whole process again. So just, I don't think we can do the pre-certification, I guess is what I'm saying. But we can certainly show, share the, the Human Relations Ordinance, you know, at those types of things, and say, this is just kind of an FYI, we're reminding you that these are protected classes in the city of Urbana. So, I mean, that would be possible.
Just out of curiosity, how often do rental units inspected by city inspectors?
Once every 10 years?
It's on a three-year cycle, but I think, you know, with staffing changes, it's a little further out.
COVID slowed things down as well.
And Grace, to answer your question on the inspections, the HQS inspections are a requirement of HUD. They want to make sure that the housing meets the minimal standards, and we're required as well with our TBRA vouchers.
Any other questions? Grace?
I was wondering with that thought, if there was, if we're interested in kind of this, since there's two things here, kind of switching to crisis pregnancy centers, if, if we're exhausted with this topic, if there was any update on that item?
I can, if you want, ma'am. And apologize, Councilor Moore, I know you'd asked for a written memo, I think, from my last kind of update on that, and I do apologize, I didn't have time on getting it ready for today's meeting, had some home issues and some car issues, and so I wasn't able to get as far as I wanted to. I've got some of it done, I just couldn't get to all of it with those. But did a couple of quick checks, I think, because I think last time, either you had commented about, or was shared about the new legislation that's pending at the state. So there was a Senate bill, and honestly, what I found, too, was there was a companion House bill, and I think both mirrored them, mirrored each other. The Senate bill kind of wandered its way a little bit quicker than the House bill did. And so that one did get approved by the Senate, it's been submitted to the House, I think, for their review. And I think that's still at the very early stages of moving it over to the House. The House bill is a little bit slower, the last, I checked honestly today, and it's in Rules Committee, and I think that's a super early stage of the idea of the process. And again, I'm probably going to misspeak, because I don't know the legislature world, I guess, on this. Now that they have the Senate bill in their possession as well, which really mirrored, I think, the House bill, my, my thought and question would be is if they're either overlap them, or if there's a possibility that where they could actually use the Senate bill for their discussions and potential advancement to get to a point of if they are going to approve it and get it to the governor, when it's way in that kind of a path. So, you know, that's, because the House bill's in an early stage, Senate bill's there for approval as well, so we just continue to monitor that. That's on the deceptive practice issue, which I think I had shared, is that there's not a city ordinance, even just in general, about the idea of deceptive practices. The state does have that, and I've seen some stuff online that just talked about that. Even though there already exists things about deceptive practices that the AG's office could conduct, I think the feeling was to get more specific in relation to these kinds of centers. And, and so that is probably going to be a likelihood of, of advancing that way, and probably a better source of dealing with the concept of deceptive practices for these centers than it would be. At least just in my opinion, I'm not saying that, you know, mine carries the day. Certainly, council is free to have discussions and determine for themselves on that in terms of the level of what we're talking about. And so again, I will put that in the memo, too, even though, again, we discussed it's been in share, just so that when I, at the memo stage of getting it submitted out, I'll give you what the current status of those are, just to get an idea of those, in conjunction with just the written version of the update I gave last time on the proposed ordinance, I think, that was originally presented, the concept of special use permits. And I think there was one other topic, too, that was kind of in that midst of local, I guess, concepts for dealing with these kinds of centers, so.
And so that, the, the bill that they're, that's making its way through, that's for deceptive practices of already existing, right? Like, they're, they're finding those that already exist?
No, what I, I apologize if I was misleading a little bit. I think there's already in place statutory language about the idea of deceptive practices. These bills are driven much more specifically to, and it's, I don't think it's necessarily even focused solely on these crisis pregnancy centers. I think it's a little bit broader than that in terms of licensed facilities on that. But they're getting more specific. There's going to be an additional now area, I guess, of that law that's dealing just specifically with this kind of concept. And I think a lot of times, when I get specific locally, and I think the state does it, too, is you're probably looking at adding some different language, and adding potential different kinds of penalties based on what you believe the seriousness of this kind of situation is. And so, and I didn't do that, I can, if the council prefers, is look at what those penalties are that currently exist versus what this bill is actually going to add in terms of those penalties. I mean, they're talking about a fine of up to $50,000, I think, if for some reason they are convicted of a violation. That sounds pretty significant to me, and probably beyond what currently exists as potential penalties. I, again, I'm only guessing off the top of my head. But typically, when you're getting more specific, you want to address a specific issue and provide maybe much more specific penalties, you know, for that kind of concept, so.
I guess what I'm asking is, or what I'm saying is, it's not preventative, it's after the fact. Yeah, so, and I think what we want is something preventative versus, you know, I, I'm glad they're looking at this to, to find those, and maybe they find them out of business, I don't know. But I think we were looking at something that could be preventative, but, and I don't think that that's what that's, those state bills are going to do.
It's not, and, and again, I'd probably put my thinking cap on, on, on for this one a little bit. And the reason I say that is, what's in place is you're looking at kinds of violations. A lot of times, you're looking for that complaining witness, I guess, that's been in there. This is what's happened to them, so when they come out, they can say, this is exactly what happened, and, you know, it's a violation of state law. I think for preventative, I, I think that was probably the concept behind what was proposed originally about them posting signs. Unfortunately, again, as, as I see it, as it currently sits, you know, it does have First Amendment implications, which is why I think, you know, that, that creates some trouble on that. You know, so to try and, and be upfront, you know, I'd want to think through the idea of what that possibility is, because you'd have, you'd be looking at doing something where you don't need someone to go into the facility and have something happen to them, that they now realize, okay, that was deceptive, or that created this problem, to know that actually did occur.
Chris?
Just a clarification, Shandra, when you say preventative, are you also introducing the concept of, we're going to ban this kind of pregnancy center from ever establishing in Urbana? Or, I mean, maybe just define it.
If, if possible, both, like, ban them from establishing, and then prevent people from going in there and having an outcome that they weren't anticipating having, I guess. Preventing them from, if they are seeking services, and they go into this thinking that they, you know, are getting something that they're actually not, I would like to prevent that from happening. But, but if we can altogether prevent them from popping up in Urbana, I mean, I think that's the ultimate goal. But I don't know if we have that power.
Apologies. That, that's going to be part of the memo, because I know that was, I think, one of the original thoughts was the concept of zoning, and either just a general kind of zoning proposition, or I think Councilmember Wilkin commented about the idea of special use permits. And I alluded it in my update, is as a general proposition, I can absolutely say with certainty is that an outright ban prohibition on them, the State Supreme Court has even said, you really can't do that. You know, the special use permit takes a little bit more thought, as we shared, and, and Councilmember Evans, I think, has understood, too. I touched on the idea of the jail expansion, because when you talk about zoning, you're looking at neighboring properties versus the impact that the business itself has just on people in general, like, the generalized community concept, on that. That's really not what zoning really gets to, it's, it's more about those neighboring properties on that. But I'll elaborate on that in the memos, you can see that with citations, and I know Councilmember Wilkin was, is good about asking for those, on the idea of the case that have said outright bans, you know, are going to be invalidated. And then I'll describe the idea of, again, the special use permit concepts and ideas of how that generally applies to the idea of a, a business coming into the community.
Grace?
Thanks, thanks for the updates, Dave. I just had one quick thing, too, just wanted to make sure you saw another email from Sarah. I just re-forwarded it to you, if not, but some more good information from other municipalities, and some things to look at. I think went out to the whole council. So some of our community members have been really great in some of the information, just wanted to make sure you saw that, too. And yeah, I would definitely appreciate kind of a written update on some of the... And yeah, I would definitely appreciate kind of a written update on some of the information, the background, putting things together, and then ultimately, you know, I think ultimately working towards what are our options? What, what can we do, if anything? And I would be curious in kind of laying out those potential routes. Thank you all for your indulgence in the discussion.
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to make sure you all saw in your packet the answers to your questions about the fee schedule that you had sent in last week, so it's in your packet. And again, that's on file for another three weeks. All right, well, we'll know further business before the council. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.